Ready, we do apologize for running a little bit late. We had a little bit of an incident over at City Hall, which kind of delayed our delayed our leadership meeting, and so we have been running a little bit behind time, but everything came out okay and nothing blew up, everybody is fine, so we will go from there.
Comforting.
Yes. The meeting follow up, Mr. City Manager, looks like you might have something on Trevitt Lane.
Yes, sir, this is just an opportunity to run by all of you, the zoning classification that we came to the conclusion of, pursuant to your feedback from last time. And so we wanted to bring that to your attention and give you the opportunity to ask any questions you may have, so we can move forward on on, you know, offering the property for proposal. Liz, you want to walk it through a little bit?
Yeah.
That's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We need the experts.
Counsel and Your Honor. So I wanted to follow up on our work session of August thirteenth with our city initiated zone change request for Trevitt, Lane and Robertson Road and the input that you all shared with us at that work session. So staff went back, we looked at, we went through some traffic studies that have been done in the area to kind of get a feel on really the magnitude and right now with the traffic counts that have been done with the existing area, we're about fifty percent of capacity as to where we can be. So staff looked at that, considered those numbers, looked again at the property and what we are recommending is to in fact look at a rezone to an R three, not the R four. So the R four again would allow, in kind of layman's terms, for apartment dwellings. But if we go with R three, it's going to be conducive to the R three development that's immediately north of this property, which is currently zoned R three, but that would also allow not only single family in R three, but it also allows for duplexes, triplexes, and if we wanted to do fourplexes in that area. And we would also at that time, so we wanted, we'd like to rezone it to that, we're to the point of publication of that. And then that would go through the three readings with you to get that rezoned R three and then C two for the property to the south of that parcel. After that rezoning process is then when we would go out for requests, for proposals, request for bids and see what we can get from developers on that. And again, staff, we're looking at again separating to sell the property eventually, we will talk again with you, I'm certain, in two separate stages, selling the residential separate from the commercial, but in looking at the numbers, looking at what your questions were of us, we also of course looked at the comprehensive land use plan for the development in that area and felt good with an R three. So Carter asked that I get your nods or thumbs up and we will get our publications and get the property posted and get everything ready for Planning Commission, Councilor Bond will hear that public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting in the future.
I assume that wasn't a thumbs up, that was a question.
It was all things. Thanks for the additional information, Liz, when you said that the traffic study showed fifty percent capacity, is that on Trevett or is that on Robertson?
Oh.
Okay, so both of those streets were identified by the traffic study of fifty percent.
Mr. Mayor? Get Paul Patty email. Liz. I've got that here too, we were working with the city engineer on that. It was not specific counselor on which of the streets, it said Robertson Road, so I'm going to lean towards that with the April twenty twenty four count. Robertson Road is what we asked for, so.
I guess I'd be curious to know how how traffic studies take into account like intersections, it makes sense. One, one street and kind of its general capacity. But to echo some of the concerns of the folks that live in that neighborhood, going from Trevett onto Robertson, there's definitely times, again, it could just be short times during the day, just at peak hours, but there's definitely times where it's very difficult to get off Trevett onto Robertson, just because there's so much traffic going back and forth, so I think that's that was mostly, I think, what the concerns of the folks in the neighborhood was, and so I, I guess I'm just looking to identify whether this traffic study would capture those moments, capture those struggles turning onto Robertson, or if it's more so just how many cars go up and down Robertson and can it handle more flow?
Mr. Mayor, from a gut, I'm going to say it was the Robertson Road focus and not turning off or on Trevett with that count that we did. But we can look for, we can look further into that, we could still move forward with what we'd like to do with the rezone, but we can look into getting potentially another traffic study ordered that would look at the turning component.
Thank you, that would make me feel more comfortable, and I think would help say change some of the concerns of the folks that live in that neighborhood.
That's what staff serves to do.
Oh, perfect.
We're on the same page.
Can I also ask, just to kind of understand the economics of what we're looking to achieve here, does anybody have any estimates on like what our carrying costs are for the property now? And what we would expect to see in the way of like property taxes? And obviously the sale of the land would be, I assume roughly around a million dollars, but to help me frame this from an economic perspective, do we have an idea of carrying costs currently? And expected property taxes afterwards?
Mr. Mayor, we can get that.
Okay.
I do not have that off top.
The only reason I ask is because a lot of folks, and this is on Facebook, which is, you know, not necessarily representative of the community as a whole, but a lot of folks seem to like the idea of just leaving it as is. And so I guess my line of inquiry along those lines is if the expected economic benefit to the city is very marginal, then I do think that argument has some credibility in the sense that if we're not gaining much in the way of revenue, do we have a financial or other motive to do anything with the property or just keep it at this kind of? It's kind of where it's kind of.
Mr. Mayor, we can put that analysis together while we are proceeding with the zone change. No harm, no foul on that, so have that going.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, do you mind if I take a crack at?
Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor. Two things that I would have you keep in mind as, as you're deliberating these issues. Number one, as it relates to developments that take place in that area, whether it be a business on the corner, whether it be patio home all the way north, there will be traffic studies required with regard to each of the developments and how they will impact the area. So that we can have a feel for what kind of regulation we're going to need to require of the developer to put into place. So that will be standard required with regard to whatever kind of development takes place over there. So, so, so be mindful of that. Secondly, in terms of what it is that we have a way of carrying costs and so on, the, the, the answer is going to be we have next to nothing in terms of carrying costs. Because we get over there, we mow maybe once a year, maybe twice a year in a really wet year. The, I think the opportunity cost is really what you should be considering with regard to developments from a number of angles. Number one, as it relates to potential residential development, we know that we have a need for residential development. We know that we have a need for residential development in that area, particularly as it relates to potentially starter homes or affordable homes or workforce housing and so on. And so those kinds of proposals may have some appeal to you, you know, as a, as a decision maker in this, in this question. Furthermore, we do know that there seems to be some interest for some light business over there as well, whether it be a C store or something to that effect. That's been very clearly identified with regard to the master plan that we put together for that area. And we hear anecdotally at least that some of those services would be appreciated, given some of the attention that has developed and grown over the years in that particular, that particular quadrant, so my, my suggestion would be that opportunity costs are probably what we're missing right now in that we will gain more by way of property taxes if those properties do develop into workforce housing or some kind of residential development, as well as some of the sales tax and so on that we might turn around, albeit C stores don't really generate new money, as it were, that will be a far more productive use than what it is now. And that is in turn, you know, it, it, it doesn't provide anything to the public, other than just vacant space that people may want to lock their dogs on, you know. So as, as we go through this, you know, be aware of that kind of, that kind of information, because those are the exact same kinds of decision making points that I would have you think about when it comes to proposals that invariably you're going to get. And I'm, and I'm, and it's possible you get a variety of, of proposals, I'm not sure, I'm hopeful you will. And we'll go from there.
We follow, thanks, City Manager, for highlighting the fact that you know, we're going to have the three readings on this rezone and stuff, but even after that point, even after we rezone it completely after the third readings, we'll still have, I assume, complete control over what gets developed there.
Exactly.
They'll need to come to us with a proposal, and so I guess I would just want to make sure that the public is aware of that as well, whether you agree with potential, you know, future development there or not, this is not like the, you know, this is not necessarily the point at which that's going to happen, they'll have to we'll have future discussions on that topic in the future, so thanks.
Councilor Bond?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, yeah, the phone calls and emails I've had, the, the major concern that they mentioned is the, the traffic bottleneck at the bridge, in particular in the morning commute. And so I think, I think that was what Councilor Gamrot was kind of rolling to us. That they're coming out of, there's traffic coming out of Trevett onto Robertson right before that bridge. It's going to make it kind of a, oh, could be a potential mess, but I think again, most of the, few of the people that I talked to, the R, the R three would probably be more powerful than R four, the high density, I would agree with that, so. The, the convenience store, interestingly enough, with those conversations, again, it was just two or three, but was, was not, that didn't seem to, just to the people I spoke to, it didn't seem to he broke that much enthusiasm, but, you know, it's not to say that it would. So I think the, the bottleneck issue in the, in the morning commute would be, so I think a lot of it would depend on the type of housing that did go in here along Trevett, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. But I, I would think that's what we're going to hear in the public hearing.
One more go around.
One more, then I'll, but, yeah, Councilor Bond brought up, I don't know how broadly we're using the term convenience store, like what, how broadly that category applies to, but the conversations I had, vehement disapproval, you know, opposition to a, a gas station, a traditional gas station, and I guess I don't see the need of a traditional gas station, but we talked about, you know, potentially a river, you know, a, a place to air up tubes and get food and drink and shuttle rides upriver and stuff, I think that would be totally fine, but yeah, traditional gas station, I already know that would be a pretty big movement in opposition. I also just want to throw out an ether, since we're on the topic of Trevett and Robertson, when it's really icy, going up Robertson to see why, that place turns into a total cluster, and so I, I know that's something that is weighing on people's minds is when we get into winter season, what's that going to do to a, a situation that's already, I mean, that it, people slide down the hill, they're off the side of the road, it's all over the place, so I know that's weighing on people's minds, and so just throwing it out there, I don't know if we can give that specific, I imagine it's the angle of the road is what the issue is, and so I don't know if we can give a special attention when it's particularly icy out, but I guarantee that's what some people are worried about, this, yeah, on those icy mornings, that's a war zone over there.
Do you have any further information?
Mr. Mayor, I do not.
Very good. I think we have got all of our questions, so I think you were looking.
We already give their directions.
Were you looking for a thumbs up to go ahead and notice it for? So do we have a thumbs up? Very good. Did we have a thumbs down? Oh, okay. Well, she was eyeballing over there, thought maybe somebody had done something. Okay, very good. So it looks like we're good to go on. Very good, so our next up, Mr. City Manager, Affordable Housing.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. This topic was a request of all of you to, to have a conversation with some of our local experts with respect to affordable housing and how it's doing and what we have going by way of some efforts that may be put and perhaps partnerships and so on we could consider as well. Liz and Kim are here to talk to us tonight about that very topic. I hope you'll feel comfortable asking questions and and mining the data and knowledge that you are hoping to gain from this discussion, because that's exactly why we're here, we want you to feel informed and and if you have direction tonight that you'd like us to take as a result of this conversation, we would embrace that as well. Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, again, Kim Summerall writes the executive director of the Casper Housing Authority and truly the authority on Casper Housing, she has put together, I think, a data packed presentation for all of you, and I think you're going to get a lot of answers this evening, so really pleased with what she's going to showcase on housing situation here.
Thank you all for having me, I appreciate it, just wanted to make sure we had the technology piece going. So before we talk about affordable housing, we wanted to do you know, it's really hard when they give old people technologies. So before we talked about affordable housing, I wanted to talk a little bit about just housing in general. And right now, we have thirty seven thousand five hundred and thirty one housing units in our community, and that's what we have to work with, that's all we have to work with, regardless of where you are on the range of how much money you make or how much money you don't make. So that thirty seven thousand five hundred and thirty one houses is what we have. Another interesting consideration of those thirty five thousand housing units is that seventy percent of our housing stock is over thirty five years old. So we have an aging housing stock, and I think that's really critical, that we know what we're dealing with when we start going down this road. In July of twenty twenty four, the average home price was over three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and that's the average. That puts that price range out of, just completely out of the ballpark for anybody who is just starting, young families, there's a lot of people that just can't do that. Those first time home buyers, they're not going to be able to handle that. This year over year, average residential sales price is something that is really interesting to look at, because you can see that it is continuing to climb. Yes, it bounces down a little bit, but then it bounces right back up. So this is what we're dealing with, and it does not appear that those housing prices are likely to come down anytime soon. Of course, our housing prices vary based on where you are. You know, a lot of our older housing is downtown, it's in the center of Casper, and there's a lot of newer housing on the east side. But what's really interesting about this graph is if you look at that very bottom number of two point one nine, that is just two months worth of housing stock on the market if you're moving here to purchase a new home. So it's really critical that you understand the situation that we're in just with housing in general. So we know our population, all of our demographics, we've got almost eighty thousand people in the county. We know about the housing stock, what we, you may not realize is that seventy three percent of that housing stock is owner occupied, and the median gross rent is nine hundred and forty five dollars. That nine hundred and forty five dollars as the median gross rent starts to become a problem when you're talking about affordable housing. Okay, affordable housing. What I'm going to give you is a variety of data from a lot of different data points. If you're going back and digging through this, because I'll give you handouts at the end, you will see that there are different years that that data comes from. So what we're trying to do, rather than just give you a study, is to give you the best picture of what's going on in Casper with affordable housing, that we can do that, and so we wanted to have multiple data points, but they do span a couple of different years based on what data is available, so just keep that in mind as you go through those packets later. So affordable housing is housing which is deemed affordable to those with a household income at or below, the median income is rated by the national government. So everything that we do when it comes to affordable housing is, is all about that area median income, so that AMI is what we're talking about. Extremely low income, they make about thirty percent of the area median income, very low is at fifty and low income is at eighty. An interesting fact is that HUD assistance is only available up to those who are at fifty percent of the area median income. So what is the AMI for, for Casper? This is the twenty twenty four income limits documentation or that we are using at the Housing Authority that says that Casper and Nantucket County, the area median income for this year is eighty five thousand nine hundred. Sounds like a lot of money, and so you start looking at what percentage of that we're dealing with. Most HUD and low income housing tax credits focus on families below sixty percent, HUD is up to fifty percent. Some of the low income housing tax credit properties do go up to sixty percent. So if you're between sixty and a hundred, there's no assistance available to you in Casper. Okay, rental housing. Forty eight percent of every renter in our community is cost burden. What cost burden means is that they pay more than thirty percent of their income on rent. So the reason that's important, when you go to the bank to buy a house, they try and keep you as close to that thirty percent as they can for your payment, so that you can live after you purchased your home. So in twenty twenty one, four thousand six hundred and nineteen families paid between thirty and fifty percent of their income on their rent, and twenty six hundred were paying over fifty percent of their income on their rent. What's also important about this graph, if you look at the very bottom of it, you'll see that in twenty ten, thirty six percent of those making thirty five thousand were cost burdened, but in twenty twenty one, that number rose to eighty percent. So we, in just that short amount of time, in eleven years, thirty percent of the people could, for the most part, were paying, you know, a significant amount, but it was at thirty percent, now we are eighty percent of people who make thirty five thousand dollars a year. So the real question is, who are we talking about? Who are the people that are being affected? Thirty one percent of them are children. Twenty one and a half are women between eighteen and thirty four, which generally makes them moms. And twenty percent are, are those over the age of fifty five that live below the poverty line. So the, these are the folks that we are talking about and that we're trying to serve in this community that qualify as very low and extremely low income. At Casper Housing Authority, our demographics look a little bit different. When we went through and pulled all of the information, the average household income of the people that we serve at the Casper Housing Authority is less than fifteen thousand dollars a year. Sixty eight percent of the head of household are female, fifty percent have an adult with a disability, and forty three percent have a head of household that's over sixty two years old. Those are some pretty harsh realities there. The average HUD rent, which is actually the tenant rent, this is the amount the tenant pays, on average, they pay three hundred and fifty four dollars. When you're on our program, if you do not have an income of any kind, you can pay as low as fifty dollars a month. The average low income housing tax credit rent is nine hundred and forty five dollars. It is important to note that when you look at low income housing tax credits, those tax credits, when the application goes in, they decide what those AMIs are going to be. They're going to say we're doing ten units that are at thirty percent AMI, and we're doing twenty five that are at fifty percent AMI. And so the properties are not identical, just because they're tax credits, it does not mean that it's the same amount to rent in one property as it is in another. So how much assisted housing do we have in Casper? There are two different types of HUD assistance in Casper that are actually based on property or people. Multi-family is one part of HUD that is an older program where they would take and project based vouchers, so they would actually put them to the property, which is project based. They would allow whoever owned the property to manage those vouchers. And so they're not managed by a housing authority, they're on a totally different side of HUD. And in Casper, we have three hundred and seventy three that are geared towards families, because these, these are actually designated towards a, a specific demographic. There's a hundred and ninety one multi-family vouchers that are elderly or disabled. And then the Casper Housing Authority runs a variety of vouchers, and we run about seven hundred and fifty. What that means is that Casper Housing Authority manages fifty seven percent of all HUD assistance in this community. The rest is managed by individual property owners. So here's a list of the multi-family and project based vouchers in Casper. Again, project based along to the property, it stays with the property, so when you leave there, you don't take your voucher with you. So let's talk about low income housing tax credits, the majority of the affordable housing that you're seeing built in Casper is through the low income housing tax credit property through this program. It is an IRS program, it is not a HUD program, so this has a whole different set of rules. There are seven hundred and sixty seven apartments, seventy nine houses and two hundred and seventy four HUD assisted units that were built or modernized through the low income housing tax credit. This is where some of them are. Some of these you saw on the multi-family list or so what happens then, it gets real interesting when you come in to apply, because you've got a low income housing tax credit application that you have to do for the property, but then if you need that HUD assistance of the project based voucher, that is a separate application, because it goes to a separate part of the government. So it gets really difficult for the people that are trying to get assistance. And so what we've discovered through our organization is that you have to have highly trained property managers and housing people so that they can work with them, along with case managers to help them navigate that. The tail end of the Lytec housing properties, these are your newer properties. All the properties that we have do have vouchers in them, but they are not the multi-family vouchers. And these were all built in the last probably about eight years. There we go, okay. Fair market rent, this is done every year by HUD, they come out and tell us on average, when we issue a voucher, how much that person should expect to pay in rent. So right now, when we issue a voucher for a three bedroom, which is generally a family size voucher, that rent is twelve hundred and fifty six dollars on average. So here's another issue that we have, it is called housing problems. A housing problem means they're cost burdened, which is they pay over, over thirty percent of their income, overcrowding and lack of a complete kitchen facility or plumbing facility. That's the folks that are identified as having housing problems. Right now, we have almost four thousand families that are under one hundred percent of the AMI that have one or more housing problems. So this is a whole other thing that we're looking at, is that quality of housing, how much they're having to pay, and what, what does it look like, what does their life look like, even when we give them assistance? So the real question is, what are we doing about it? And that's probably what you guys would like to hear. So at the Housing Authority, in, since two thousand and fifteen, we have been able to increase our HUD funding to the housing assistance payments by seventy seven percent. This is the money that we give to private landlords in this community to house low income and extremely low income families. So we've actually increased that by seventy seven percent. Our section eight vouchers, you guys hear about section eight all the time, we have been able, this, this is not an easy task to do, is to get more vouchers, you always have to enter new programs, so we always have a new program coming in in order to increase this by thirty eight percent. What this is, is the number of families that are on our program. So our job is to balance the number of vouchers and the amount of money. They have to balance, because we're using that money to pay for that voucher, at the end of the day, you can't go over on either one, you can't go over on vouchers and you cannot go over on money, otherwise we have to pay it ourselves, we have to find another way to pay for it. So our performance measures, our housing choice voucher program, right now, we are at a hundred and two percent as far as being leased up, that's how much we have on the streets. Again, that has to come down to below one hundred by December thirty first. So we're utilizing the money and we're utilizing the vouchers, but we got to balance it. Our project based voucher, again, attached to the property, the housing choice voucher is attached to the family, so that's the difference between the two. That is at a hundred percent leased. And our emergency housing vouchers, this is the new program that HUD came out with a few years ago to help house people that are hard to house. We are at a lease rate of a hundred and eighteen percent. Again, that has to be balanced by the end of the year. And so that's what we'll be doing to get to bring all of that into compliance by the end of the year. So when someone says, oh, we just need to go to the housing board and get a voucher, this is the reality. They are all leased up. So until someone gives up a voucher, I don't have a voucher to give you. Another strategy that we've used is what we call combined housing. So we've built Lytec properties and what we've done is combined the subsidy in with the property, but not at a hundred percent. All multifamily properties, the one by Kelly Wash is probably the biggest one, they are one hundred percent vouched. So everyone there is low income. What we're trying to do is balance. Part of it is that low income voucher, that extremely low income, and then we're getting into the affordable housing. So they do have a chance to promote self-sufficiency. You're familiar with our developments. You can see that we stay around by those numbers on the bottom of the vouchers and the Lytec. We try and balance them at fifty to sixty percent. Another question we get is where does the funding come from? The housing assistance payments, the Section Eight, all of that comes from HUD. The low income housing tax credits, which is what we use to develop with, comes from the IRS. The transitional housing programs that we run, and I'll talk a little bit more on that just briefly, they are locally funded. We write grants, work with you guys, and so I'll give you a little bit of information about those. The other thing we do is that we partner. We partner with a lot of people to get things done. We have a huge volunteer network and we have a lot of partners throughout the city. Human service agencies. We have partners, homeless service providers are our partners through the EHB program. And then, of course, as we develop, we have a lot of partners in the construction arena where we know just about all the contractors and subcontractors in the city. The other partners we have and sponsors, this is where our local businesses come in along with the nonprofits or when they come together to help us do outreach to families at the Father's Day event and then also to help those that are on the streets at Project Homeless Connect. So here's our reality, and this is what we deal with every day. We've got eighty-six hundred people in poverty. There are two point three seven persons per household on average, which means we need about thirty-six hundred and fifty units. What we have available is thirteen hundred and then through Lytec, total, we have eight hundred and forty-six. We believe that we are short almost fifteen hundred housing units. The other question is, if we're short fifteen hundred housing units, where are they living? Where are they at right now? They're cost burdened, they're crowded, they're in some standard housing, they're in temporary or homeless housing. These are some pretty tough things. And we're seeing kids in cars, we're seeing tents, we're seeing travel trailers. They're all over the place. Multiple families living in the same home. It makes it very, very difficult to send homework home with a child when they don't have any place to do that. For those who are cost burdened, forty-one percent of them are single-parent families and thirty-six percent are people with disabilities. These are the people that are suffering the most. And then with the overcrowding in the substandard units, the children are the highest that are overcrowded and people with disabilities are the most likely to live in substandard housing. So what we have, what we have under transitional and temporary housing, of course, we know Wyoming Rescue Mission. That is the only emergency housing in the city. So if you call my office and you say, I have someone who's sleeping in their car, I need to do something right now, I cannot do anything with that. They have to go to the mission. It's the only emergency housing. It takes us a good two weeks to get you through, to get you into transitional housing because there's quite a bit of work that has to go into making sure that you can handle it, that you're ready for it, what your background check is, those types of things. The Rescue Mission also, they offer homeless and Mercy Housing. They also offer a transitional housing program through their discipleship program, which is program-specific. You do need to be in the program in order to be in the transitional housing. Seton House is a wonderful resource. They do transitional housing for single-parent families. You can stay there for up to two years. CHA, which is C-H-A's transitional housing, we work with all families regardless of what that family looks like. Our foundations program, which is also a C-H-A-funded program, is for women that are coming out of an institutional environment. And by that, they can be the state hospital, it can be WBI, it can be CWCC, Lusk Women's Prison. Generally, when we work with women coming out of an environment of that type, there is a bunch of children somewhere. They're in the foster system, they are with extended family. There's a lot that needs to be done to get them back on their feet and able to work with their household and get them reunified in a positive and healthy manner. And that's what our foundations program does. Community Action has a Housing First program and Hope House does a transitional housing program for men. So with this said, how can, how can you guys help? So the first thing is to support the efforts of your housing authority. We have done more in the last ten years than any other housing authority in this state. We are leading on every set of numbers that there are. And so when you need answers about housing, come and talk to us. The level of expertise in my office is incredible. You can look through your property portfolio, just like they're doing in your city services. Can you donate or discount to low-income housing providers? Where we built Liberty, you guys gave us a great deal on that property and that's how we were able to build that. Habitat for Humanity is building single-family homes. Is there a way to help them get some land into their hands? I've talked before about the statewide allocation. There is a statewide allocation of vouchers that's supposed to help some of these other homes or other communities like Riverton, Cody, Powell, Gillette. They are not always leased in those communities. They are often leased in Cheyenne through the Cheyenne Housing Authority. We cannot support Riverton from here. We cannot do that. We've been to HUD and everybody else that has any portion of this and we've been told that only the governor's office can reallocate that statewide allocation. So we need to start talking to him about that. If it was done based on geography, Casper Housing Authority would handle Riverton so that we could help the families in Riverton stay in their home city. They don't come here because they're looking for a vacation. They come here because there's nothing else there. They need help. And so that's something that's really important. And then last, come and tour the C-H-A. We'd love to show you what's going on there. Takes about an hour, but you'll learn a lot about housing. And like I said, the level of expertise and my employees is pretty incredible. We just finished an audit and we have brand-new auditors. They told us, for a housing authority of our size, they've never seen anything as clean as the way we do business. So we were very happy to hear that just yesterday. So. So I'll shoot Carter an eye and if there are any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
So we do have several of our tenants on the vouchers. And so the one thing I guess that confuses us, so are you following HUD guidelines with those particular people or is that just a policy of yours?
So when we work with HUD, there are musts and maybes. Okay, you must do it this way or you may change it a little bit. The majority of that program is all musts. And then when you look at that, you add on top of it fair housing. And so you've got both sets of those rules. So ninety-nine percent of what we do is HUD-regulated.
And just as a follow-up, because part of the struggle is, is that we'd get cases, so we have a family in a fourplex and they are not well-suited for a fourplex in any way, shape or form. And HUD does not allow us to even relocate them for free because if I relocate them to a different residence, so it's a standalone property, they will lose their assistance for five years. And so, which now we're kind of just stuck with them and now the building is vacating because of the problem, but they've got children and I don't want to put them out on the street because that's where they came from.
Well, if it's a specific incident like that, I'd have to look at the file and see what's going on with it.
Okay, with you.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Give us a question, we'll look into it and see what's going on.
So Kim, this is just a little bit off topic, this was off topic. Could you give us an update on Willard School, how that's coming along, how things are going?
I haven't slit my wrist yet. We did go out for bid and so it is, we're waiting on those bids to come in right now. We are expecting to have it under contract with our contractor within the next couple of weeks. We have to have that contract in place within the next couple of weeks. And so we do have a contractor chosen, we are looking for stuff right now.
But it's gonna be really cool once it's finished.
I hope so.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And I'm happy to walk you through that, Ray, if you want to see any plans or playground or any of that.
That'd be great. I trust you guys, you guys do a great job, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from council?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Kim. That was a wealth of information. I hope it provided some insight to some of the other folks. I've been coming to board meetings for two years and I still do not understand what you guys do and how you keep all this stuff, you know, how you juggle all these plates. I don't have any questions for you at the moment, but I think this is a lot of great information and I think we should have a follow-up conversation at some point in the future about how the city can be a better partner in regards to, you know, this fifteen hundred housing unit shortage. My guess is, I didn't make it to the statewide housing forum today. I think Vice Mayor made it to a morning session and I know they're meeting again at Casper College this evening. So I know people are looking to the state to be a better partner in regards to potentially using state land to build some of these units and stuff. And so I just, I think it's worthy of us having a future conversation about what the city can be doing as well to help fill this gap. As if those trends are any indication, problems not going to get any easier to solve, it's just going to get worse. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Kim, did you say we're gonna get a copy of your presentation?
Yes, I have it here, so that's why there are so many numbers. Okay, you guys would want to look at those.
Yeah.
It's a lot of information.
Well, it's, I mean, it's really, really valuable and I just, I really appreciate you having kind of the broad overview of where we're at in general and then specifically with, you know, our families who are, who are at the, you know, level of needing affordable housing. When you, I have a couple of thoughts, but the first question, so when you say fifteen housing, fifteen hundred housing units that we need, is that within the affordable housing?
Yes.
That's specifically in the affordable housing? So that's not even accounting for, is there, do you have any sense or have you done any of the work to know kind of that and beyond what we're lacking?
You know, I don't because we are experts in the affordable housing arena and so we don't move out into the other areas. I know that we do need workforce housing, that's something that we've talked about for quite a while. And then, of course, we need, we need more housing, period, because they're expensive, they're aging. And that also makes it difficult in the rental market when the housing is aging because we do inspections on all the properties and they do have to pass.
Okay, thank you. Can I make a quick call? So I would also really appreciate the specific ideas you have, you know, that the city can do in terms of partnerships with land. I wanted to ask for a little bit more detail, if you can, or maybe, I don't know what the next steps would be, but in terms of, and Kyle, you alluded to this, the having a conversation about the reallocation based on geography. Can you, I'm sorry, can you just explain that one more time?
So about thirty years ago, there was, there was a statewide allocation and it belonged at WCDAs. And so WCDAs oversaw, they were basically the housing authority for the state. And so they had eight, eight communities that they were looking at. And they're the bigger ones, you know, Gillette, Cody, Powell, Riverton, just those bigger mid-sized towns. But they're the towns that have no services. And so that allocation is really critical. At about thirty years ago, they just suddenly gave it through the Cheyenne Housing Network. They gave them all of the entire service area and all of these communities. So the way it works right now is when you go to apply, so you live in Riverton and you go online to apply, they do not have separate wait lists. So there's not a separate waitlist for Cheyenne or Riverton or Cody. You apply and you're in there with everybody else. So say a voucher becomes available in Riverton, but the next person on the list lives in Cheyenne, the voucher's leased up in Cheyenne. So that's what's happening is that it's trickling to Cheyenne instead of keeping people in their home communities. And so we've, we've been fighting this for about five years because we're a bit of a grayhound community. And so everyone assumes, we can't even take care of Casper. They assume that we can take care of them, so they send people here because they have enough services. We manage the Lusk Housing Authority and they didn't know what to do when they had one homeless person because they have zero services and why would you build a shelter for one person? And so that's kind of what they're looking at, but they make the assumption that we can house them and we can't. And so what's happening is we're getting overwhelmed with homeless and low-income people because there are no services anywhere else in the state. But we have it, it's just in Cheyenne. And so that's been a frustration for us for about five years. We've exhausted all the way through HUD, everywhere that can be done, it can only be done by the governor's office at this point.
Okay, I think that's tremendously helpful. Is there something that we can do to establish a conversation or a line of communication with the office?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager.
My response would be yes, I certainly can. I don't know if it will change what's happened, but I think having the conversation is something we can orchestrate. Absolutely.
Sounds really.
It's very much.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mr. Bond.
Thank you. Kim, you kind of related to what you were just, we're just talking about with the, is that kind of related to that emergency housing situation you were describing here?
So the way it's been working, and we just found out about two years ago when we got a new Wyoming HUD director, that anytime there was an additional program like the emergency housing vouchers, they would offer it to Cheyenne because Cheyenne is acting as our state housing authority. If Cheyenne said no to the program, which in this case they did for the emergency housing vouchers, HUD would just take it back and reallocate it to another state. What happened with the emergency housing vouchers in our case, which is how we found this out, is that our state director for HUD said, what about Casper? Let Casper have them. And so he was able to facilitate that. How, we believe that for the last thirty years, Cheyenne Housing Authority has been making all the decisions regarding HUD for the entire state of Wyoming. We're not okay with that. And so we'd like for someone to at least look into this. I don't believe when that, that trade was made, as far as we can tell, it never went through the governor's office to be approved. And so there is, yeah, from WCDAs to Cheyenne Housing Authority. It's a very interesting contract. So, but I think there is room for someone to look into it and say, hey, you know, it's been thirty years. If nothing else, let's relook at it and see what's best for the people of Wyoming.
So and kind of related to that, I guess, is, so you mentioned the shortage of, the shortage of emergency housing and is that correct? And so is that something, Kim, that's, is that within the purview and responsibility of C-H-A to do if you had funding to, to, to provide more? And I have a follow-up question about that too.
That's a really good question. So one of the things that we can provide, because the mission is doing a great job of emergency housing. And so we're hesitant to step into that room because the, you know, they're just doing a really good job. And there is openings there. Where we need assistance is in that transitional housing piece because there are a lot of people that come to us that either don't qualify or for some reason they've, maybe they've got a felony or a drug, they got a risk for drugs last weekend. Well, you're not going to qualify for a regular housing voucher, plus there is a waiting list. And so that transitional housing is really helping us to get people back on their feet, keep them in a home and get them ready to get that voucher and to go out on their own.
So then you, are you still saying you, Casper needs more? Emergency and, is that, is that kind of trend interchangeable with transitional as emergency or?
The emergency housing is more, if you rolled into town and you're going to spend a couple of days at the mission.
I see.
What we're looking to do is people that are from here, that are losing their jobs, that are, whatever their reasoning is, but they don't, they either, either we don't have housing available or they don't qualify. We need that gap in there and that's what that transitional housing is. Seton House has twenty-two, we have twenty. I will say that we do ours with a half a person. I will say that we do ours with a half a person and not six, but you know, so there's, there's a lot of room in there that we could really start to help people if there was funding available.
Thank you.
Mr. Gamrot.
No, thank you.
Very good. Anybody else have any questions? We definitely appreciate the information and we look forward to the handouts so we can try to digest it a little more. But we appreciate your time and bringing us up to, up to speed on all of this.
Well, thank you for having me.
Absolutely.
Very much. And I'll get those handouts.
Great. And it's a fair study.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, you'll recall that back in June, we had a review with all of you pertaining to the consultant's presentation regarding transit and the, the fairs that, of course, people pay to access the system. Pursuant to the preferred alternative identified in the study, the implementation phase would include a formal consideration of the fair structure and consider some changes that the study identified as being important to, to evaluate. That is the purpose of our gathering tonight. Kayden and Liz are here tonight to walk us through those recommendations and see what direction you would have in preparation for some level of adoption pursuant to your direction this evening.
Beth, I'm Liz, but I'm not Steve Liz. I'm Seth Andras, Casper Area M P O. So we conducted this study on behalf of the city of Casper. We are allocated federal money every year to conduct studies and almost every year we do a transit study. So Nelson Nygaard was here, as the city manager said, who had presentation on the Casper Area Transit Fair Study before it was completed. That study has now been out for public comment and approved by both the policy and technical committees for the M P O. So I don't want to confuse you. Next week, this will also be on your agenda for the approval from this body as our financial overseer. It is your responsibility to approve all of our studies. So you'll see this again. It's just basically saying that the consultants has completed their work and we can close the contract. So that's what you'll see next week. It has nothing to do with tonight, which is actually requesting to implement the recommendation made by Nelson Nygaard. So I'm going to turn it over to Kayden now and he's going to walk you through what that preferred option was and the next steps.
Thank you, Beth. Mr. Mayor, council members, good afternoon. As she said, my name is Kayden. I'm the transit manager. I'm glad to be back. Appreciate my time here. So I just want to cover a couple of different things with, when we say fare increase, I know it kind of, you know, everyone shudders a little bit because we're talking about increasing costs essentially, but for the most part, this is kind of a realignment and a simplification of the fare as well. So as of right now, currently, we have a different rate for students, a different rate for seniors, a different rate for disability, and then general fare. So one of the recommendations from this fair study is that we will only have two rates for both assist and link. So there will be one rate for, for link that would be a general fare. And then all other encompassing categories would be the same fare. So what we're doing is we basically haven't seen a fair increase since like oh, five for, for Lincoln about twenty or two thousand nine, two thousand ten for assist. So we just want to make sure that we have your approval before we continue with the process of, of looking into this and moving forward. So if we don't have a universal consensus, we'll kind of reconsider these things, but we want to talk to you guys first before we go to any of our other partners as since we're Casper Area Transit, we do have a responsibility to the other area, or other municipalities and towns in the area as well. So this is not the approval for the rate increase as of right now. So we just want to make sure that we have your approval to, to see this through essentially. This is, I just want to clarify, this is a completely separate item from the cards that I talked about last time. Those were already in the budget. That's already, you know, signed and done. This is going to be simply, simply for our fare box revenue. And then, so, and our target date range would be roughly January for implementation of the fair study. So it would, or for the fair increase. So it wouldn't be something that would be happening immediately. It would be relatively soon and we'd still have the process to go through. So so I have the correct data in front of me. So our preferred, our preferred alternative would be a very subtle increase for our link general ridership, which would go from one dollar as it is now to a dollar twenty-five. And then the monthly pass would maintain the same price of, of thirty dollars for a monthly pass. So as I explained previously, the monthly pass, the benefit of the new pass program we have is that we can expand for as many months as somebody wants to purchase at one time, or we can have it deferred to a specific month if they want to purchase it. There's flexibility there. But that price is going to remain the same. So it'll be an increased cost to those who do prefer the monthly pass membership as it would be twenty-four times the benefit instead of thirty. So instead of a dollar rate, it's going to a dollar twenty-five. So there's a bit of a decrease there for the monthly pass rate. In conjunction with that, the current student rate is twenty-five dollars and the current senior rate is fifteen dollars for the monthly pass. So those monthly passes would transition to both being fifteen dollars. So there would no longer be two different classifications for price. In addition to that, the reduced price would go to fifty cents for students subsidized and for the seniors and disability category as well. One other caveat from this study that we have is that subsidy, instead of it being a provided service at the beginning of every month or beginning of every reapplication period for individuals, it would give them the preferred or discounted rate as a qualifier. So they would be at a fifty cent rate if they were to qualify for subsidy. And what that does is that helps recoup some of our costs here for transit and it provides some, some fare box revenue coming in. We have seen some, for lack of a better term, abuse of the transit system where we have people riding for three or four plus hours. And then when we address that, sometimes patrons become a little confrontational. So it, it does create an additional stress on our drivers. We've also had, and it totally, patrons express that they are discouraged from riding the link bus and prefer to ride the assist bus. And so they are actually paying an increase in cost for that service. They would be willing to ride the link bus, but with the abuses and the things that are going on with the bus, they're not necessarily comfortable riding. A lot of them are senior citizens or people with disabilities who may not necessarily be in a wheelchair. So when they're sitting with the general population, when those abuses are happening, it makes it harder for them to maneuver or interact. So in addition to that, for the assist side for prices, currently we are at two dollars for our senior and disabled patrons. That would bump to two fifty in total cost. And then for our general rides, it would still remain the same at five dollars. There would not be a transition or change there. I think for right now, that's all I have. I'm more interested in fielding your guys' questions to make sure I'm respectful of your time.
Mr. Pollock.
Thank you. Thanks, Kayden. I, I think the philosophy behind simplifying all of this makes a lot of sense to me and, and probably be a better user experience. I'm a little bit concerned by the projected seventeen percent decrease in ridership. Can you add some detail there? How is that calculated? And which sort of category of ridership is driving that decrease predominantly?
So that is predominantly our subsidized ridership. And so that was kind of the abuse that I was talking about. So especially during the winter months and the hotter summer days, we do see an increase in ridership. And what we have noticed, and we're working on trying to get the numbers with our Tripmaster system, we're still implementing that to have offboarding data as well, so we can reflect these numbers more accurately. But what we're getting reported from drivers is that we have riders who are utilizing the bus for either a heated shelter or an air-conditioned shelter throughout the day. And so that's kind of inflating some numbers and deflating other numbers. So that is essentially where that seventeen percent decrease is expected, is we are expecting some loss of overall ridership because there will be patrons who will not utilize the service with it not being completely free for, for those particular rides.
Good. Mr. Gamrot.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Kay, for the information. I was curious, I noticed that it seems that the link transit system provides twice as many trips as the Cheyenne transport. If I was, I'm trying to find the exact page where I saw that, but I was just curious if you knew why that might be that we're providing so many more trips than the Cheyenne Transit System.
In all honesty, this was kind of launched just as I got into here. And so I was maybe Beth, would you have any more information on what they provided you for that? Is that okay, Mr. Mayor, if I yield to Beth?
Oh, absolutely. You can, you can even phone a friend if you need.
From my understanding in Cheyenne, they suspended all transit service during COVID. They just did not offer it at all. And then they went to zero fare. So there's basically two options that I've gotten from the Cheyenne M P O was that people just stopped using transit and those numbers haven't recovered. And the other thing is, it's not as dynamic as our transit system. So they do not offer as many routes because they went fare-free. So they are offering, offering basically a bare minimum service in Cheyenne. Whether the, and I don't know if they've recovered yet from COVID with their numbers increasing from getting rid of their transit system during that. Hope that helps.
Does. Thank you. I had, I mean, I wanted to bring up the free fare that Cheyenne offers. Do you have any indication at this point, or is it still too early to tell what sort of impact, if any, that's had in their community? I haven't seen anything in like news publishers.
Mayor, Council, I have not anecdotally heard anything from the Cheyenne P O. Of course, they went from a director that they had for thirty years, he retired to a new director who has now left. So I can get that information from you, see how it's going. The numbers that they gave the consultants, you know, it, it doesn't, we just did our numbers and figured that it did not make sense for Casper, the increase in costs and the number of buses that would be needed was just beyond a reasonable expectation for us to even come with an ask to any of the council. So.
Okay. And thank you. That was essentially the crux of my question was if we've done that analysis of.
Yeah, I think zero fare was, it's in the study. So we, we did attach that. Fair scenarios were chapter five. And zero fare analysis was chapter six. So if you're particularly interested in the consultant's numbers and how they came to that conclusion, that is in chapter six of the study. Which should be attached and if not, is always available on our website, casperareanmpo.org.
You good, Mr. Gamrot?
I am, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Are we okay to move forward then with the, with the rate changes?
Or maybe official vote next week?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah, yeah. No, this is.
Oh, no, I'm thinking of something else. My bad. Forget it. Forget what I said.
No, basically, they're talking about this occurring the first of January.
Roughly the twenty-first. So, yeah.
Election or Swerenday.
I believe that was the date you said, right? Yeah, we still have other things. So I, like I said, this is ideally what we would like to do, but there's a lot of nuances.
It still needs to go before a formal vote as well. That's a resolution.
Yes.
And we're giving, to go ahead and whenever it's appropriate to bring that forward.
Is that? Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, next week you will essentially pass a minute action that closes the contract with this particular set of consultants. And that is really it. And then we're bringing forward implementation recommendations there.
Very good. Everybody get that? Excellent. We're good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Adrona County Columbarium M O U.
Mr. Mayor, this is the item that we gave you some basic insight on a couple of weeks ago as it relates to a partnership with the county to better contend with indigent and unidentified burials. The, the remains that we typically get for indigent and unidentified folks generally will come in the form of cremains. And therefore, looking at a columbarium in conjunction with the county makes a lot of sense, particularly since the county has the responsibility for facilitating the burial of, of unidentified folks and people. So with that, the basic proposal that the, the county has approved is that of being given essentially some space at the cemetery, the Highland Park Cemetery for the purpose of erecting a columbarium at the cost of the county. So that when those remains are provided to the county, they essentially bring those to the city and the city will deposit those remains in the columbarium. Until which point that facility is full. And my understanding is that at that point in time, the, the county will purchase another columbarium and install it adjacent to the existing columbarium. And the process will continue for the next ninety-six series of remains that we receive. So the that, that fundamentally is a partnership. The, the question to council is whether or not you're comfortable at this point moving forward with respect to allowing a piece of property to be used for that purpose in partnership with the county as well as waiving fees associated with these, this, this style of burial that we would ordinarily charge a, a family or whatever who are burying their, their loved ones in a similar fashion. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, we'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Questions? Counselor Pollock.
Thank you. So as it stands right now, it sounds like the, the city and our cemetery is not handling these remains at all right now. They're, they're kept at the corner. So right now, the city of Casper really has nothing to do with this process.
Mr. Mayor, that fundamentally is true. That's not to say that we haven't gotten remains in the past directly sent to us and that, that kind of thing. But the obligation that unidentified remains incur is with the county. The county corners off specifically.
Do we know roughly how many? Because I'm assuming these will be taken up by the, by the draft that we got. These will be taking up regular burial plots that we would not be able to sell to somebody else. Is that a?
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I have?
I already see her shaking her head yes. So it is asked and answered. So you can stay there, Ms. Salima. You want the answer for me? Unless you just want to come down.
I can stay here. You're okay with that. But Mayor, councilors, so, yes.
Good evening. So the answer to your question, Mayor, is yes, we are proposing setting aside six traditional burial plots that could be the place for two columbaria. that could be the place for two columbaria. One to be installed now, one to be installed potentially at a later date if it is needed. So it'd be six plots that we are proposing we reserve for this purpose.
Very good. And I read through it very quickly. How many spaces are in each columbarium?
Mayor, ninety-six remains could be held in each unit.
Very good. That was all. The next question, obviously, how many do we get a year?
Mayor, that varies. And as the city manager indicated, for the last several years, in fact, I believe, don't quote me on this, but I believe it's about three years ago, laws changed to allow cremation of indigents. And so prior to that, we traditionally buried them, and so we received all of them. And I do not believe it was a large number each year. But since that time, cremains have been allowed and the coroner has been keeping them. And so as we understand it, though, there are several that would be able to be placed in this unit immediately.
Very good. But basically, we're talking a couple of decades or longer probably for at least the first columbarium. Potentially.
Potentially, I would say a decade, sure.
Okay. Just to try to give the public some idea of what we're proposing, that was that was the reason I was asking those questions. So.
Can you give me a sense of, it sounds to me like we're offering then to sort of handle the administrative burden of this on behalf of the county for free. So I'm wondering, like, what is the what, what is the scope of that? Do we have any concerns about the impact of that on the department and sort of what is the outside, I mean, I like the idea, right, of having like a place that is nicer than the coroner's office for the remains, but to me, it seems like we're we're taking a burden that is not ours, et cetera, and doing it then just to be helpful, I think, which is fine as long as it's not an overly burdensome scenario for the department.
Mayor, Counselor, thank you for thinking of the impact that this could potentially have on my staff. I appreciate that. But we do believe that it is the right thing to do to give these people a permanent resting place potentially. And we do not believe that the impact is going to be overly burdensome. The reality is these are unclaimed remains generally, and so there's no service associated. And so not just with indigents, but in other cases, we we actually offer drop-off service, which sounds a little callous, but it allows the remains to be dropped off at the cemetery and then placed in the niches within the columbarium at at our you know, timeline. And so it can be scheduled as such to not have a negative impact on the operation and and fit well into other obligations of the operation. Okay, thanks. And the recording becomes important because at times, family members do come to claim those cremains. And so we want to ensure that they're accurately recorded so that if the time came that somebody wanted to claim a loved one, we would know exactly where they were, who they were, et cetera, if we have that information. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is everybody okay with the M O U? Looks like we're good to go. Thank you, Salima. Next thing is the Y dot TAP Committee appointment. Mr. City Manager, I will let you explain a little bit about that.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The TAP Committee is the Transportation Alternatives Program Committee that is tasked with the responsibility of evaluating TAP grants from around the state. The TAP Committee is overseen by Y dot as in as is that funding that generally comes forward for these kinds of applications, the types of applications that we typically apply for through the TAP program will generally revolve around pathways and extending network or making connections and so forth throughout throughout Casper. Council will recall that we generally, we have a history, I should say, of doing that in partnership with the Trax Trust in order to assist their efforts in expanding our our network. But nonetheless, anytime we use those kinds of funds, we have to go through this committee in order to get that that award made. We have the opportunity to have a representative of our area be on that committee. We have not had representation on that committee for a number of years, if ever. And so the opportunity, albeit a rather quick turnaround, which I do acknowledge, is a good one to take advantage of for our area, particularly since we do use those funds and are a fairly routine applicant for these dollars, given the needs that we have here, the desires that that we we try to pursue. Pathways are not the only outcomes that this committee oversees. There's a number of things that they try to fund through this program as identified in your memo. I would say that for the person who is appointed by by you to serve on this committee, you will likely have less than a quarterly meeting a year to participate. And that can be done, of course, via Zoom and those kinds of things. So my hope is that council will give us the green light for a name from among your body. Or you can give me the direction to appoint a staff person as well that can serve on this committee in that both types of applicants, nominees, that are just identified are eligible. So your direction, Your Honor, Counselors, would be really helpful in this regard, and we'll move forward and get that nominee made right away. Nomination, I should say, made right away.
Counselor Pollock.
What's the term of the appointment?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, I'm going to say it's probably no less than two years, but could be as many as four for the initial.
Take somebody then that is more assuredly going to be here into the coming next couple of years, regardless of election goals?
Mr. Mayor, I would say that if if you're appointing someone from among your body, that would make a lot of sense. Absolutely.
However, as he said, it does not have to be somebody that would remain on council. Is that a?
I think that's a fair statement.
Yes, because they are willing to go ahead and take a staff member. So it does not specifically have to be a council member that would be reelected.
I'll just say, I'd be interested. Just throwing it out there. What they can do with a staff member or a staff member can, whichever.
So my my thought when I when I first read this and I thought about the idea of an advisory committee, I feel like it should be somebody who has a some working knowledge of the system, the present system and the needs and so forth. And I don't, I didn't know about Counselor Jensen, but I I mean, I think she'd be a great representative. I think also I, my thought was, is there a staff member who has that perspective? You know, I mean, Tom was able to speak to us, but I didn't know. So there was somebody within his the departments that he oversees that, you know, works intimate more intimately with the trail system and the bike system that, you know, truly could advise. Where I just know for myself, yeah, I was speaking for Counselor Jensen, but that, you know, not having that working, that intimate knowledge, I don't know what, you know, how helpful, you know, my my input would be, for sure.
I would second Counselor Bonds. I just think for continuity and then not having to guess who's going to be here in four years. It's, I just think that a staff member would just provide that. And then if after four years they want to continue, they can just continue to go. And so that way, it's a more of a stabilized thing for this.
The one the one hesitation, depending on who that staff member might be, we're talking about somebody that is intimately familiar with it. I would be a little bit concerned about a potential, particularly when Casper is sending things forward, a potentially of a conflict of interest and in essence, maybe not being quite as fairly unbiased, so to speak, or not being able to advocate quite as much maybe for for projects. So that's, that's the only concern I have because I think we do have very qualified staff. There's no doubt about that. And.
They may have, they may have a, they may have a procedure and process in place for that, you know, for them to excuse themselves or to swear at.
And I don't know.
Which may take care of. But yeah, it's, it's a valid concern, for sure.
But by the same token, by not having to be on council, if you were willing to do it, I would be willing to volunteer to fill that role for council going forward as well. So I think you've got a couple of volunteers and so just kind of from here even. So I will stay out of this discussion from this point forward and allow the rest of council to decide what we need to do.
I just have a question for Carter. So so in your direction, are you asking us to appoint a couple of people from council and then you appoint some people and then we figure out who we think is going to be the better ones? Or are you asking one way or the other? I guess I'm not clear on what you're asking.
That's a fair question. I appreciate that, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
The council has a number of ways they can go. Certainly, we we have one seat available to us, as you probably gathered. If council were to say we'd like to appoint a councilperson, what I would like to do is take the name of that councilperson forward and and have that be our nominee. On the other hand, if council would like a staff appointment to be made, my suggestion and request would be to give me that general, that general direction. We'd rather a staff person to be appointed. And then I would go forward and talk to a few staff to try to determine and discern bandwidth and availability and commitment capacity and those kinds of things, and then bring that name forward to the state. Once we bring it forward to the state, if the state requires some sort of formal action on your part, we then would bring that back to you for a formal ratificat- ratifying minute action, I think, of kind, that would be the final step if needed. Does that help, Vice Mayor? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? The follow-up. Counselor Pacheco.
So I guess my, and if you're looking for direction, Carter, I would, I would say that I kind of fall in between saying that I think a staff member might be better. Nothing against the mayor or Jenna. But I think it might be better for a staff member, just kind of what everybody was saying, and I'd feel I'd be open to supporting that. Especially one that has a background in it.
Counselor Gaiman?
Thank you, Mayor. My question, Carter, is do we have any idea what the makeup of this advisory committee currently is? I'm trying to find a a membership list and it doesn't look like there's one publicly available. The other stakeholders as part of this advisory committee, who are they? Are they counselors? Are they staff members? Are they just community stakeholders?
Another fair question, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Absolutely. Counselor, it is a makeup of elected officials as well as non-elected officials. Some staffers from Y dot, if you will, as well. I couldn't find a list either. I would have submitted that in your packet, but my understanding is it's a, it's a, it's a mix of folks. Small towns typically, not as many big towns represented historically.
Any other questions? Then looks like we need to have a vote amongst ourselves. Do we want to appoint somebody potentially from council or do we want a staff person? So I guess my first comment would be, how many people want a staff person? Looks like a staff person.
You know, we'll, we'll get to work on that and get
Very good.
A name to the state here very, very soon.
That works.
All right. Thank you.
Not a problem. Next thing is the agenda review.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a whole lot to bring up for the agenda review tonight. You are all familiar with the grid document and have looked at it a number of times in the past. You can see what we have on our, on our agenda, as it were, for future work sessions and so forth in particular. I try to be very sensitive with respect to items that many of you identify as important to you. And so we try to queue those up and dock it effectively as possible. But if you don't see your item, please refer to the back page to be sure that we haven't at least placed your item for for future consideration here on the near horizon. I will tell you that there is a bit of a push from staff's perspective to want to get as many items through our seated council possibly. Given a lot of the institutional knowledge that you have and the uncertainty of who will continue and who will not. So we will notice that work sessions are starting to get filled up because we do want, we do have, you know, a sense of urgency that relates to trying to get rid of our lingering questions answered that we've had work sessions on in the past or other discussions. And so that may be a tone in what you see here with some of the dockets that we got lined up. Bumble, ask any questions or problems in the past. I'd be happy to take.
Everybody good? Very good. Then it looks like we will move on to council around the table. Let's try you, Counselor Pollock.
I really don't have a bunch of an update for you. They get to tour the Wild Sports Ranch with a number of folks last week. And I've had a small animal house sports meeting that I did attend. Kyle, were you there? Can you give that update? Thanks. I'm, you know, it's, there's a number of days that have passed and I can't quite remember everything that we talked about, so I'll pump that one to Kyle for tonight.
Counselor Bond?
Okay, thank you. Just, I just wanted to pass on some kudos to the police department for I had had some more contact with folks in the P V area. They've been a little, little more calm in the last couple of days with with the situation going on out there. And so they're very happy with the response from the police department and and very much appreciated the the movement and the support. Appreciate that. I did attend the senior senior senate board meeting yesterday. They were very pleased with the outcome of the election, obviously, with the passage of the senior district. And it's coming, not a moment too soon. Their, their reserves, we, we learned, are dwindled by about half over the last I mean, two or three years, just with the increasing costs and diminishing funding and so forth. So now I think that it seems like the next steps are be putting that district board new living board in place, I believe. And so that has to be elected by the voters. And so I think there's a couple of next steps before before that's all set up and and money can be begin to flow there. So but they were, again, very pleased with it.
Goodbye.
Yes.
Do you have any idea how long the filing period for people that are interested in serving on that board? Do you know when the filing period is?
I don't really remember. I, because I, I can't remember if it was for if it's, it's going to be on the November, this November ballot, I think.
I believe so, yeah.
And I don't know when that closes, for sure. I didn't, didn't hear that and I didn't ask. I did, I attended the R three two one hundred year celebration last Friday evening, very, very wonderful evening, enjoyable. Governor Sullivan, Dan, his brother Dan with the auctioneer. Dan was the auctioneer. Governor Sullivan was the the M C and and it was just a very, very nice evening. Also, the Nicholas Museum has their annual fashion ball coming up September fifth and sixth, I believe. So if you're interested in wanting to get tickets, they're still available. Tables are available. Individual tickets are, I think, seven. Individual tickets are, I think, seventy-five and. For the gala and um fifteen dollars. The bash is actually on Thursday night, which is a. Literally, the the art that's for sale is under three hundred dollars and. More affordable and a little more casual event um with orders and so forth. And then the gala is a little more, a little more, not formal, but a little dressier, a little more, sit down dinner, that kind of. Get your tickets if you're interested.
Well, I went to the Sports Ranch and did that tour and uh. Just spent a busy week, but a lot of other things and um. We went, I had a Old Yellowstone meeting, board meeting yesterday, but I was not able to make it. So Kyle's gonna have to talk about that too. And that was fun.
I'm having tonight. Thank you.
Councilor Haskins.
I'm having tonight either, or a concert tomorrow.
All right.
Hopefully it gets better soon.
Councilor Gamber.
Uh, yeah, we had Metro Animal Shelter Sports meeting last week. Uh, we got to meet Jody, who's a shelter manager. Um, really excited to have her on board. She seemed very driven and um has a pretty ambitious schedule, things that she'd like to get done. She kind of filled us in on what uh her near-term goals are, and that's gonna be utilizing more volunteers. And she'll soon be ramping up outreach efforts to recruit uh those additional volunteers. They had an adoption event last Friday. They're planning to do larger ones in the future, once they have a little, uh, you know, some more staff on board. They had a staff member that was pretty significantly injured by a dog bite, uh, and so they were out for a few weeks and. They just got them back in the office and so just, uh, you know, staffing is always something they struggle with over there. Uh, we talked about publishing reports um uh along the lines of significant incidents of the day or of the week. Um, so that we can get a little more insight in regards to kind of what their day-to-day activities look like and some of the things that they are encountering on a. Day-to-day basis, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, they're gonna be taking over management of their social media and using Instagram more. And so again, along the lines of more community outreach, they're gonna have. More control over their social media and uh they're gonna be pushing a lot more uh out to those channels, so I'd encourage folks to follow along. Um, providing a lot more in the way of education and information to the community. They had a recent meeting with best friends and they're gonna continue working towards the TNR program. There was some community banter about. Uh, you know, whether will we abandon the TNR program or what the status was with it. It is a staffing issue. Uh, just. Do not have the bodies to be able to juggle that plate along with all the other ones that they have up at the shelter. So once staffing gets more stable. Uh, I imagine we'll see more uh in regards to the TNR program and some of those events. Our next meeting is September eighteenth. We did have an Old Yellowstone District Board meeting yesterday. I did not take notes on that, so I'm just gonna speak off the cuff. I don't like doing that, but um. We did talk about the recent Board of Appeals meeting that recently recently occurred in regards to uh. Uh. Yeah, is that public at this point? I mean, those.
It was a public meeting, so.
It was a public meeting, yeah. So um, I don't know if we've gotten an update since that Board of Appeals happened, but. Uh, that board did choose to allow that developer to move forward with that project. Um, despite the fact that it didn't fit quite in with the OYD form-based code. There was a really good, healthy discussion about that yesterday in regards to whether the OYD form-based code. Needs amended, uh, because it has been a while uh since, um, you know, uh, we revised it. Uh, there was talk about more, having more public input during those um discussions, especially like the appeals process, having a lot more public engagement. Um. Yeah, you know, uh, again, really spirited discussion. Um. And so I I guess I would just encourage folks, if they have any thoughts, uh, concerns, questions along the lines of the Yellowstone apartment complex down there or anything else. In regards to what they would like to see the OYD look like, uh, I'd encourage them to reach out, but that was kind of the the. The crux of the conversation is how do we make sure that uh. The OYD form-based code reflects what the current community sentiments are in regards to development in that area. Is it more important to preserve the character and kind of uh aesthetics of the uh area? Or do we want development down there to provide things like much-needed residential housing that's been uh, you know. Illustrated through multiple studies that have been done on the topic, so. Really good conversation. Um, and then, yeah, we talked about just uh all the things David Street Station has going on. I think this week is. Fiesta Wyom, so it's like the Latin uh kind of uh cultural festival. It's a really cool event. I'd encourage you to come out. It's just a very different event. Uh, then they have a community dinner coming up in a couple of weeks that True Bakery is gonna cater. Uh, sounds amazing. Um, and then, yeah, our three two one, uh, we were joined by Laura Hunter. Uh, she was. Uh, she hosted us for our meeting, so she talked about the gala that they had, wasn't able to make it, but they left up some of the decorations, so it was kind of nice to be able to see that. Uh, did take a tour of the Wyoming Sports Ranch along with most of my colleagues. I was glad to hear that FCI, their primary contractor, uh, seventy percent of all the subwork that's been done has been carried out by local outfits. So it sounds like they were really um tried really hard to sub outwork the local uh. People, and so I was really glad to hear that. They stated that. Uh, Monday through Thursday, from the hours of three to ten, they're already booked, uh, beginning January twelfth, so they're still. On track to open beginning of next year and uh, yeah, sounds like their calendar is already pretty full, so that was uh good to hear. Their first event that completely books the whole facility is March, in March. Um. And they have five million dollars left to raise of the uh what's gonna turn out to be a probably fifty-one million dollar project. And they're looking to pay for all of it in cash, no loans or anything like that. So if uh folks have not donated yet, if they know anyone that uh. Uh, might be a potential donor for the project, feel free to reach out to me or uh anyone else, happy to make those connections. Pretty impressed with their fundraising effort so far. That's a lot of money in a relatively short period of time. And it was really cool to take a tour of that facility. They put it up fast. It's very big, um, so it was neat to be able to get inside of it. And then, yeah, uh, tour the LDS temple as well. They'll be doing public tours for the next few weeks until a dedication, at which point it will be restricted. To only certain members of the church. I was glad to see some local artists represented in the building, uh, through some of the artwork. Everyone was very nice. It was very organized. Um, you know, tour and so I appreciate the invite. That's all I.
Thank you.
Councilor Sullivan.
Um, I guess I have a couple of thoughts of, um. It it's all kind of related to the the conversation we had earlier on housing. Um, and I I thought that that presentation that Kim brought in was really informative. There was so much information there and. I don't fully have my head wrapped around it, but um, I guess, I mean, one of the questions that. That she wasn't able to answer because it's not in her purview is just, I mean, she gave us some basic facts about housing that's available. And then some uh an idea of what the gap is for this, the community that's eligible for affordable housing. Is there any information that we have about housing needs beyond that or? Like, how does one come upon information like that? Um, it it seems to me like. Like, housing is just such a huge issue. It's related to a couple of other points that I have, but, I mean, housing in general. Um, and then housing for certain segments of our population, and I I don't know how to wrap. My head around that from like a strategic city-based perspective. So I guess my question is, do we know? Is there a way to know, um, you know, what our kind of housing needs are overall? Um. Beyond just that fifteen hundred number that she quoted us, do, or is there a way to find out somehow?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind my responding a little bit, um, thank you. Counselor, great question. I I would say, you know, the the the. Um, battery of information that she was quoting primarily was statewide housing assessment.
Okay.
And that was done in twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I also know that communities do drill down. And do their own housing needs analysis. And so certainly, that's something that we can look into and try to bring you some idea. Perhaps in a work session coming up or whatever, what it would take to get that drilled down. And understand on a more local basis what what that needs. Assessment would suggest, if if that's of interest.
I might have a direction for that, an avenue of where to get the information.
Oh, good.
I mean, that's. Really interesting to me. I don't know how the rest of the council.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks like it's.
Okay, awesome. Um.
Future agenda.
That would be wonderful. Um, I, yeah, so just kind of information about what it would take to get that information.
Good.
Um. The the first step of information. Um, yeah, I mean, I guess, I, I mean, it feels like, you know, coming toward the end of of my time here on council, but it it just seems like. The city, it would really benefit from kind of a a housing strategy. I mean, there were several. Um. Points that Kim raised, I think, you know, looking for those partnerships for um getting land. To the Housing Authority or in the hand of developers who are willing to to, you know, gear that. Those properties towards certain segments of the population. Um, and then also. That meeting with the governor's office seems like it could be really worthwhile, and I'd be more than happy to volunteer to be part of that, um. Depending on what is required and what makes most sense. Um, but I also just wondered, I mean, she mentioned transitional housing. And it's come up so much. Um, I wondered if if we could get an update on. Where we're at with the opioid settlement money and if that's perhaps one of the areas that we could look to allocate some of that money to. It just seems. Quite appropriate, given the gap, like the people who are falling into the gap and needing that kind of housing. Um, so I guess that's another question, whether we'd be able to be willing to get some information on that or if you're able to provide an update.
Mr. Mayor, I'll I'll take a crack at it, yeah, counselor. Um. The the opioid settlement money, just to kind of start in reverse order.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, no, it's okay. It 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 is driven by a fairly narrow directive. That the order uh was was developed around. And so. The RSP that we have talked about here numerous times in the past. To to try to get services for those who are struggling with um addiction and those kinds of things. Um, um, was developed around that order. And so I I would say. Personally, that uh we probably don't have that flexibility to deal with housing. Now, certainly Eric can can weigh in with regard to perhaps a deeper dive into the order and maybe maybe there is some discernment. That he can provide that would allow it, you know, or provide that type of uh flexibility, but I I would say probably not. To answer the other question, however, where we're at with the opioid agreement, it just so happened that I had a conversation with the chairman. Of the County Commission, um, very recently, last week. And he expressed a lot of interest in trying to get that resolved before the end of the year. And and kind of that urgency I was discussing earlier, they're feeling it a little bit as well on the county side, and this is one of those issues for them evidently. So uh, my my request to to all of you and to the city attorney would be, let's take him up on that. And let's see if we can get an agreement done before the end of the year so that those who come after you and after the county commissioners who are leaving. Um, we'll have that. Direction and hopefully that arrangement put together.
Right. I have just two other quick comments, uh, or actually another question. Um. Mike, you mentioned um an update on the situation out in PV and I thought we had discussed. Getting more infertile.
Yeah.
More information on that. I don't know what the mechanism is, but are we going to?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah.
Um.
It's coming up.
Fantastic. I just wanted to double check. Um, and then, yeah, I've got a homeless coalition meeting, so that's it for me.
Great. Hang one minute. You had something? Oh, you wanna go? Okay.
I just had the question, it's kind of like what um Jai was talking about with the. Um, housing and stuff. Do you know, and I didn't ask first, I didn't really know about it until a minute ago, but the neighborhood's um. Stabilization program that's NSP, do we have something like that through HUD? For our state, it's the, like I said, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, because it's actually, it's a federal funding source through HUD. That provides emergency assistance for state and local governments to acquire and redevelop foreclosed properties. Do we do anything like that? There's some other states around that I was just seeing here where they give grants to every state to redevelop these. Uh, potentially abandoned or, you know, like we've been tearing them down, the ones that are really bad. Um. Do we have something like that that we can start buying or they could buy with that grant? Some homes and that would help subsidize their mission?
Mr. Mayor, uh, counselor, um, I I that's a very perceptive question. Uh, she she did talk about that. And I am not prepared to say whether or not the Housing Authority has been using those dollars. To the extent that uh that you're discussing in a lot of the programming that they do. I can tell you that from the city standpoint, we have not tried to access those dollars. In in doing the state neighborhood neighborhood stabilizing that, you know, on a local level, that uh, you know, that we've undertaken. Um, so it certainly sparked some curiosity in in my mind.
Hmm.
With regard to whether or not we can use as a city those kinds of dollars, or do we have to use it through the Housing Authority? Which I'm confident they probably have.
Yeah, it's through, what does it say? It's HUD's program, so it's HUD.gov slash NSP.
Mm-hmm.
But it says that it's coming from the, see, Title III of the Housing Economic Recovery Act of two thousand and eight. Is what the program's authorized under, but it just seems like, I was looking at some other states and they've bought like five hundred houses that they have. Flipped essentially and turned into HUD housing.
That'd be a great program. I'd like to follow up then if I can.
And I think our city attorney has something on the close line.
Yeah, I'm Mike Mayer, uh, counselors. Um, so as part of the trust's effort through the NCSJ, um. There is a housing subcommittee that I'm a part of. Uh, Kim from CHA attended last week, so did Liz. And we're gonna actually meet with some folks out of Indianapolis that have uh really established some nonprofits um through like a land banking initiative. Very similar to what you're discussing where uh abandoned properties that are condemned by the city can be turned around for development. Um, part of that is looking at funding streams. I'm certainly no expert on on HUD. Uh, but that is something we're actively exploring um to to, and I think that's the city could certainly play. A role if if you so choose and and helps spurring those those efforts. Also, there is a uh uh collaborative effort looking at transitional housing in that. It's sub uh housing subcommittee group as well. Uh, Kim and Liz are both very instrumental. Uh, Melissa Noah from the Winding Housing Networks involved, and then there's a bevy of of nonprofits uh also involved. Uh, lines that are much sharper on these issues than I am, um, but certainly these are avenues that we're we're uh looking at, um, and I. That that program can very well be something that 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 could work. I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, so I looked up, um, like specifically to like Reno and Nevada, just because I have relatives there. But um, they they do it is one of the things and it's under the nevada housing search dot org, but they also partner with different. Um, apartment complexes and they offer the same thing, so they're.
You may want to send those links to uh. Him and. Do it.
He's he's on the committee. Now, but yeah, I mean, there's just a lot of different things out there that maybe we're not, you know, on top of quite like the bigger cities that have already seen. What we're seeing, you know, a couple decades ago and have done stuff, so anyhow, just wanted to mention that.
Very good. I think you had.
Yeah, this is super fast. I forgot I had a Rick Board meeting on Friday. And so there were nine applicants for. Roughly about four hundred thousand dollars in the need. We only had about a hundred eighty-five thousand left. So I'm over tabling a couple of the bigger ones um to look at, trying to fund those later down the road. Um, and so keep you updated on that. I think the city casper put uh one in, so they're looking at that, so. Um, for Washington Park, I believe. Keep you up to date. That's all I had. Thank you.
Very good.
Is it my turn?
Yes, we're finally down to you and me.
Talking about housing, I'll just continue the conversation. I attended the housing.
Talking about housing, I'll just continue the conversation. I attended the housing reform meeting today from WCDA. So just as a side note, WCDA usually calls me at least twice a year. And they're, and so they call, from my understanding, all private landlords. And they want to know how many single-family homes I have, how many apartments I have, how many low-income I have, what counties, what cities, the whole thing. And so WCDA collects that data and they just have people that just collect that and smile and dial. So so that's probably where you're gonna get the information from. And so for the meeting today, they had said that approximately twenty to forty thousand homes, and that is single-family homes, multifamily, all homes, is needed in the state of Wyoming. And so the um, you guys are gonna love the direction that they're going. So today, this this meeting today was gathering up a survey. I do have the survey, if any of you want to take it and do the survey. It's, they've identified a few problems, but in my mind, they didn't identify all of the issues. And so what they're doing is so this today, they're gathering up the surveys, public comments, and then they're gathering everything up. And then they're coming back in October to present their findings. And it's gonna be a little bit more closer to what they're gonna present in November for the final draft of everything. Um, so for, they're they're looking to preserve or create more housing, single-family homes, multifamily rentals, flexibility in municipalities to try to just figure out how they can just get that done. Um, so there's the issues they've identified is funding limitations, lack in cost of infrastructure, limited builder capacity, and then extending city-towns boundaries. And so that's kind of annexing from the county, and then diverse types of housing. So so the point that I had made is that WCDA tends to only focus only on first-time homebuyers and they're not focusing on the elderly. And when reality is, they need to focus on both of them because they have a whole lot of people like myself. It's in a large home. It's cheaper to stay put versus moving. And so if there were older neighborhoods to to relocate to, if there was assistance to create that, it would free up a lot of larger rooms for the families to move up and then free up the smaller homes for the first-time homebuyers. So, but right now, elderly are buying first-time homebuyer homes because they're just one levels. And it's just cheaper than going into assisted living. And so um, like I said, we've got the server there, just kind of just gathering stage at the moment. And I'm happy to send it off to you guys if you want to take that. Then uh, I attended the Visit Casper right directly after that. And so they had the Casper International Film Festival, uh, Visit Casper's no longer doing. They have created a separate board, so another board is going to be just doing that for the fall or for the winter festival and stuff. So it sounds like they're kind of just getting going, and so it'd be interesting to see how they're going to start moving forward with that. Um, Proud to Host the Best is up for renewal, so they have rebranded Proud to Host the Best for Casper. So is going to be Compete Casper with a tagline, Proud to Host the Best. And so they're in the process of doing all of that and kind of putting together all the information for this. And so just as a side note, uh, Proud to Host the Best provides the City of Casper twenty-four million dollars in economic impact. It's pretty substantial. Um.
What, when does it happen?
The. It is for the high schools tournaments.
Okay.
And so um, so Gillette's apparently making a big play for it. And so then, um, also Tyler Doherty is stepping down as CEO. And so they're starting at the end of the year, so they're starting a new search for a new CEO.
Oh, my God.
That's it?
That's it.
Well, as several have mentioned, I attended the Sports Ranch uh tour and uh very nice place. I had a meeting with the Pike's Peak Southern Christian Leadership on Friday morning. Uh, that went very well. They really didn't have any asks or anything, just wanted to introduce themselves to us and uh they are an organization that is quite similar to the NAACP promoting uh promoting civil rights and nonviolence. So that's kind of where they are. Um, there was a great symphony concert Saturday night, Pops in the Park. Um, they had uh uh, a vocalist from out of town that uh did a very fine job of singing the theme songs from several of the Bond movies. And while she was doing costume changes, uh, they played the themes from Pink Panther, Shaft, um, Peter Gunn, um.
Incredibles.
The Incredibles. Thank you. I'm trying to remember, were there any others? But yeah.
Yeah.
But basically, uh, the vocalist, the vocalist sang, uh, what, Goldfinger? Uh, You Only, You Only Live Twice, Live and Let Die, uh, Diamonds for Forever. But all of the the classic uh Bond movies, uh, it was very good, uh, very entertaining. Looked like they had a very good turnout. And then uh, yesterday, uh, made the tour of the new uh, Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints Temple over on the west side of town. That is a beautiful uh interior. Uh, several local artists were featured there. Um, so very good, I would say. Um, if you do have an opportunity, I think you have what is it, a couple of weeks to be able to visit. After that, uh, you have to be an LDS in good standing member to even be able to enter. So this would be your one and only chance, but it is a beautiful facility. Very well done. That's all I have. Anybody else? No further comments? Looks like we're done then. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks to you all.